Be given by Pastor David Lorenz from First Baptist Church. Thank you for being here Pastor. After he's done blessing us, invocating for us, we're gonna say the pledges. So after he gets done, I'm gonna have all of you council members stand up and help us say the pledges, okay? Everybody's gonna stand up, but you guys especially stand up and say the pledges.
Let's pray together. Heavenly Father, what a wonderful opportunity to come together, to learn, to grow. Lord, I'm thankful for these second graders who are here tonight, that they get a glimpse of what it means to lead, to be young men and women of character, to learn how our city operates. And I pray, Lord, that we would continue to be a city that's a blessing to others, that as we know, our foundation is on family and education and faith, that we would continue to to hold those things true. And as we look forward to this season, we're most of all thankful for your son, God who is with us, that you sent your son for us, that he would be with us, God in the flesh. And so we ask these things in his name, amen.
Amen. Y'all stand and we'll say the pledges together. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible. Good job, good job, okay. Have your, take your seats. Not yet. Have a seat. I can't wait to find out your name, hang on. Item four, council for a day, consider a proclamation declaring December 5th tomorrow as Klein Elementary School Day at the city, in the city of Friendswood, Texas. So now, it's my pleasure to invite these kids up one at a time when I announce your name and I'll call you up individually and I wanna get some recognition for your teacher also. We're gonna start way over there with City Secretary Hunter Callaway. And Hunter, yes. And you're in Ms. Gunner's class, right? Awesome. Here, council member position six, L. Lorenzo. From Mrs. Ramsey's class. All right. Christopher Muller, council member position five. Oh, watch that step. From Ms. Fulk's class. Ms. Fulk's here? Okay. Council member position four, Bailey Smith.
Wait, can I try it?
And that's from Ms. Bellamini's class. Yay, Ms. Bellamini. Bailey. Our mayor is Patience Foreman. From Mrs. Carter's class, is Mrs. Carter here? Oh. Yes. Patience probably wears her out. Council member position three, Olivia Erlich. From Mrs. James' class. Yay. Council member position two, Hudson White. From Mrs. Salazar's class. Mrs. Salazar here? Oh. My mother has a sick son right here. But I'm getting.
Does it work?
Mayor Pro Tem, also council member position one, Carolyn McQuinn. Did I say that right, Carolyn? Carolyn? And she's also in Mrs. Ramsey's class. Caroline, I'm sorry. Now, our city attorney, smartest person in the room, Matthew McBride. From Mrs. James' class. And last but not least, Harper Holly is our city manager. Also in Mrs. Salazar's class, coming in, Harper told me that she was city manager, the person that's in charge. And I said, I think, we like to let him think that. All right. Everybody have your script? Ready to go Harper? City manager? Go ahead.
Mayor and council, tonight you have before you a proposed proclamation declaring December 5th, 2023, CW Klein Elementary Day in Friendswood, Texas. As you know, Klein Elementary is part of the Friendswood Independent School District and is explanatory campus and a source for, of pride for our community. Has our city attorney approved the wording of our proposed proclamation?
Yes, Mayor. I've drafted the wording of the proposed proclamation and it is in line with the vision statement of the city of Friendswood.
Will our city secretary please read the city vision statement for the record? I will now read the proposed proclamation, a proposed proclamation of the city of Friendswood, Texas, declaring December 5th, 2023, as CW Klein Elementary Day in the city of Friendswood, Texas. It is now time to take a vote. Do I have a motion to accept the proposed proclamation?
I move to that we accept the proposed proclamation as presented.
I second that motion.
Any discussion?
At Klein Elementary, we pledge to be kids with character and we pledge to be bucket fillers.
At Klein Elementary, we will be honest, reliable, and worthy of trust.
We will be responsible and fair, doing what we must.
At Klein Elementary, with our words and actions, we show that we care.
We'll be good citizens and do our share.
At Klein Elementary, we will respect ourselves and others too.
We will expect the best in all we do.
Would the city secretary please read the motion on the table?
We have a motion by council member Caroline McQuinn and second from council member to accept a proposed proclamation of city of Friendswood, Texas, declaring December 5th, 2023, as CW Klein Elementary Day in the city of Friendswood, Texas.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor, please raise your hand. All opposed, please raise your hand. Motion passed nine to zero. Congratulations, Klein Elementary School and this council for a day meeting is now adjourned.
Yay!
How about if we all come up and stand behind for a group picture? Is that okay Katie? What do you think?
Why is this red? Oh. Okay. Testing, one, two, three.
If y'all wanna get out of your seats and we're gonna get behind the chairs back here.
Everybody stands?
Yeah, cuz it's too wide. Well, with the, I think back here.
Okay, let me get mine.
They discovered the candy. If we can scrunch as much as possible.
I didn't even know they were there.
Especially the kids, if they can.
We don't get paid, but we get free candy. That's a good news.
They get paid in candy. All right, ready? Three, two, one. Three, two, one, and then we'll do another one in the lobby after parents get a chance to come take a look.
All right, we are moving on. Item five, council comments and reports. I'll start off and say, we had a great Santa in the park Saturday. Flapjack run in the morning, all kinds of things going on in this city. Flapjack run, farmer's market was going on down the street and Santa in the park was awesome. And I even got to read a poem, so, you know, it was a good night. Go ahead, council member Hanks.
Thank you. So I know we all got a message from the Chamber of Commerce about adopting a senior and I know a lot of people are in need, a lot, this time of the year especially, and everybody up here is doing a lot, and I know that. But I just wanted you to know that we adopted a senior on behalf of the city council of Friendswood and dropped off the bag last week, so if you hear anything, know that you did that. And then also, I unfortunately attended the service for Captain Norris, one of the firefighters at the Forest Bend Fire Department. And it's a very sad situation that he passed away, but I want to thank again all of our first responders and the things that they do for our city and how often we don't even think about it, we just take it for granted. And so, thank you and, you know, my condolences to his family.
Council member Rocky. Mayor Pro Tem, Rocky. I'll get that right.
Just wanted to remind everyone that tomorrow at seven is the annual Christmas tree lighting at the Brown Museum that we've done for how many years?
I tried to research that, but we've been doing it since the 60s.
60s, so, and there will be wassail and cider and some singing. You're welcome to come, it's a, it's a nice event. And I'm talking about the Historical Society, we were the beneficiaries from a family that has lived in town 60 or 70 years, but they had a 1910 buckboard, you know, horse drawn buckboard that they have donated to us. And so, it's now on the property at the Perry House, but we will be figuring out ways to use it. You may see it in the Fourth of July Parade and other events too, so it's, it's very exciting to have one.
Council member Brant.
While we're talking about the Perry Home, you may have noticed that there's a concrete foundation that has been poured and it is now, I guess the proper word is curing. Anyway, our first tree art will be placed there very soon, so be on the lookout. It's actually a lovely rendition, it has three sides to it and it's going to tell you a bit about the early years, history of Friendswood. So we'll try to get something out so that y'all can see it on social media, but this is something where private dollars were raised and was in agreement with the Historical Society, the Friends Church, and a private group of folks who were able to raise enough funds to have the tree carved. And I think it's really, really awesome. It'll be the first of hopefully about three pieces of art that'll go up around town, so just stay tuned. The tree's actually from the, where the parsonage used to stand, one of those trees that were taken down. So it's actually, it has a long history here in Friendswood, so it's not a tree from just anywhere. It's a tree from just about a block away from where it's gonna be resting on its final spot.
Thank you. Council member Matranga.
Yes, I wanted to also mention Santa in the park. I ended up working out there most of the day on Saturday and, you know, we all know what kind of rains we had leading up to that event. And I just wanted to commend all the city staff and the members of the Keep Friendswood Beautiful for all their work in reconfiguring. I know it wasn't the most optimum solution, but it was the best considering all the rain that we had had and all the wet ground out there. So I still think it was a great event, it's one of my favorite events of the year that occurs here in the city. But I just wanted to thank city staff and Keep Friendswood Beautiful members for all their hard work. I think it was a great event.
Thanks for being out there. Did you get to go down the snow hill?
I did not, I was in line. I was keeping, I was keeping the Santa line orderly, yes.
Council member Aaron, weren't? You didn't get to go down the slide?
Maybe next year.
Weren't tall enough? All right, item six, public comment. In order to comply with the provisions of the Texas Open Meetings Act, the city council may not deliberate any item not listed on the agenda. As such, the city council will listen to public comment and may one, refer the item to city management for further action, or two, direct staff for the placement of said item on a future agenda. During public comment, public shall comply with the council's rules of decorum. I have one note, one card here, Don Johnson. Still serving us on the Subsidance District Board?
I am still on the Subsidance District Board, that's one of my.
Thank you for that.
One of my passions, that and flooding. I really do all that I can to, you know, improve the organization.
We all know a little too much about flooding around here. Well, floor is yours, sir.
What, what I came to talk about was something a little bit different. I watched the meeting last month and there was some discussion about GCAD and pointing people to GCAD and how that works and how many people you can have. And I was sitting there thinking, gee, it's too bad Cheryl wasn't at that meeting, you know? A lot of people don't know her background and depth of information that she has. She started out many years ago before she got into any of this stuff as a commercial real estate appraiser. So she was familiar with the real estate end of everything. And she actually did for a short period of time go to work for the chief appraiser Ken Wright at the GCAD appraisal district. And she wrote the first policies and procedures manual that they have down there. And part of that is still in play today for the organization. From there, that's what really got her into running for the CCISD school board, where eventually she became the president of the board and they sent her to the GCAD board and she became the president of the GCAD board and then eventually ran for tax assessor collector, which is where she is now and she is still on the GCAD board. So she just has a wealth of knowledge about GCAD. And if you would ever like to have her come down and talk about anything, she'd be glad to do it or you can call her up and get information. I guess she's what you'd call a resident expert, she's our Friendswood resident and she's an expert on all that. Which kind of brought me around to the subject of, I see that y'all are gonna vote for the nominees tonight and I am here to recommend that y'all vote for Robin Collins. Robin is mayor of Kima, if you don't know. And she's been involved in Galveston County for a long, long time, should be a great asset to that board. She understands the small cities and the problems of the mid to small cities. You know, we've got people on that board from the big cities, you know, Big City and Galveston and Texas City. And of course Cheryl's on that board. And by the way, before I run out of time here, y'all can vote for Cheryl. You can nominate her and then vote for her and then that way, that's, she's assured to having a vote on that board. And she does have a vote right now, but I think that vote could go away if, if people don't renew that. So if you don't vote for Robin, then whoever you do vote for, ask them, kinda give them a little litmus test, are they gonna vote to continue Cheryl's voting authority at GCAD? Or do they want her to go quietly sit in the corner while they do whatever they want to do? Anyway, I'm about to run out of time here. Thank you very much, like I said, y'all have any questions about GCAD, feel free to ask Cheryl, give her a call at home or invite her down.
Thanks, Don.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate it. Hey, item seven, work session topics, presentation and discussion regarding the water and wastewater impact fee update. Good evening, Hill.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'd like to reintroduce to you Kendall Ryan with Freezer Nichols. He's here to do a presentation for you guys on our impact fee study. He's going to present some numbers to you guys. There's not a, gonna be any action tonight. This is a presentation for you to look at the numbers and chew them over and then there'll be some action that next month's council meeting. So I'll turn it over to him, if you have any questions, I'll be available to answer anything that you might ask that he might not have an answer to, so.
Thank you, sir. Good to see you again, Kendall.
Good to see y'all as well, so y'all heard it straight from Hill, the hard questions go to Hill, easy ones go to me.
And the short presentation is from you, okay.
Got it. Mayor Foreman did seek me out before to make sure I was gonna go quickly through the presentation, so I will.
We've seen this a few times, but.
Yeah, yeah, we're gonna, we're definitely gonna go over this as mostly review with some, some of the new information at the end. I would be remiss if I didn't introduce Ms. Bailey Keller as well, she's with me with Freezer Nichols out of Pearland as well, instrumental to helping put this presentation together for you. So tonight, we're gonna go over, you've probably seen this agenda before as well, very, very quickly go over the impact fee basics and remind us kind of why we're here, talk about the Friendswood specific land use assumptions and the CIPs that went into the calculation of your updated impact fee, run the numbers by you and then talk about path forward and see if you have any questions. As a reminder, impact fees are one-time charged that helps to pay for new water and wastewater infrastructure that serves growth. They're systematic in that they are governed by 395, the Texas Local Government Code. You know, we always include this slide, it's really a policy question that cities like Friendswood have answered a long time ago and that you have impact fees. So you've decided that you want to, for new development, to share in the cost of water and wastewater development. We mentioned that they're governed by chapter 395 of the Texas Local Government Code. We are here for the required five-year update, so that is, that is the purpose of the timing of this, of this discussion and this study. And as just as a reminder, cities basically use them as a function to help recuse some of the costs associated with providing water and wastewater infrastructure that serves growth. This bottom part of this slide kinda reminds us that your city, your planning and zoning commission served as the capital improvements advisory committee. We met in the past few weeks and I believe there's a letter in your packet for tonight's agenda that talks about their, their recommendations coming out of that, of that presentation. One of our final review slides talks about, just as a reminder, what is eligible for impact fees. It's really anything in the green is anything related to new growth, including the cost of engineering survey, those land acquisition and debt service. So the financing costs associated with bonds taken out to pay for water and sewer infrastructure all can be included in the impact fee calculation. Anything that gets used, extra INI in your wastewater system, operations and maintenance, things like that are not allowed to be included in impact fees. We will come back to this later, it's a very simple math equation, I promise there's no quizzes, we'll come back to it later. So this is a, just a note for the, the city's current impact fee ordinance. It was adopted in February of 2019. We are on track to do the five-year update and have it active in January, this coming January, so right on time for the five-year update. This is, it kind of serves as a reminder that your current impact fees, they're based on meter sizes, water meter sizes, your base meter's a one-inch meter. And so if you add the water and wastewater columns for a one-inch meter, your current impact fee is a little over $4,200. That'll be a number we'll come back to at the end, just as a reference point for now. We are nearing the end of the process for the impact fees. We've been working with staff on this, y'all, you know, we, we had a council workshop here back in July. We, we mentioned that we had the SEAC workshop a matter of weeks ago and then today is an informational session to kind of just really let you see the report before it goes out for advertisement. This report, 395 requires a 30-day advertising window before the impact fee public hearing is held. And so we are coming up on when that 30-day window starts here later this week. And so this is kind of a look for you before the final sealed report goes out for that advertising window. All right, so, oh, we've hidden the numbers, cool, so that's one through four. So the, the last time I believe we showed you an example land use assumption, now it's your own. So what we've done is we've worked with extensively with staff and the planning group, y'all, hopefully y'all are back here saying, yes, not, what's he talking about? But no, we, we worked extensively on what are the developments that we foresee in the city of Friendswood? Those are kind of there on the right. I will kind of point out that you see a lot of the specific developments that we know about and are anticipating are kind of in the, we'll, we'll call it just the bottom half of the city for, for easy round figures. We'll come back to that thought here in a minute, it'll be important. Basically, we're quantifying the existing population and commercial acreage and then we're looking at what we're expecting in the 10-year window and putting the difference in terms of service units. And a service unit, quite simply put, is what serves a typical house in the city of Friendswood. A house in Friendswood has a one-inch meter. Every meter has what they call a safe maximum operating capacity. If desired, your customers could pull that much water through that size meter and that would be the max impact on your system for an impact fee. And so the relationship between, if you divide, say, a two-inch meter by the water allowed through a one-inch meter, that sets the ratio of the equivalent service units for each meter size and thus forms the relationship for any impact fees larger than one inch. So this is the summary of kind of what all the land use work distilled down into. You'll notice that the numbers are all different, but they, the, the 10-year growth is the same for both water and wastewater. That's because there are a certain handful of current customers in Friendswood that have city water, but they have septic service for wastewater. So the, we don't anticipate that to be the case moving forward, everyone should have water and sewer, so the growth in service units is the same for water and wastewater. All right, so this is where we talked about the location of anticipated development. So this on the left is water projects that, it's not your full water CIP, this is just what's gonna plan to serve growth for the next 10 years. And then on the wastewater side, you can see the, the cluster in green. By and large, the wastewater is very easy to see, that those are kind of located coincident with where we anticipate the developments to come in, so that's kind of how those projects were flagged. Because Friendswood gets water from the north, the water lines have to run through the city. That's why you see some running through areas where there's not growth, it's cuz it's getting the water to areas where there are growth. These next two slides, we are not gonna spend long on these. What these basically are, these are the, kind of the, the show your work part, where we document how much of the project's cost is related to 10-year growth. So there's a percentage that is currently used, there's a percentage that gets used in 10 years and then the delta is the percentage related to growth. What I would draw your attention to is the bottom right number on the slide. So for water, it's about $8.1 million of the, of the larger number that is eligible for 10-year growth. In wastewater, it's about $3.1 million. We'll come back to those numbers in a second. And by a second, I mean one second. So on this slide, you can see summarized 8.1 million in water, 3.1 million in wastewater. All right, so I said we come back to this equation. It was just very, very quickly, really for the purposes of the, of the terminology. So an ESU or an SUE, they're used interchangeably, that's the, that's the single house connection. We have the eligible costs, which is what we just talked about. We're gonna take away a rate credit, which in the methodology being used in this study and allowed by 395, that just means cut the cost in half for the 10-year, 10-year cost and then divide that number, divide the cost by the service unit growth. And so to bring that together, we will show, on the top half is the water and the bottom half is the wastewater. Now, for the eagle-eyed observer, we had 8 million and 3 million on the water and wastewater. That is not the numbers at the top of these charts, that's because we've included the debt service. So the financing costs and the debt service on top of the 8.1 and 3.1 get us to about 13.5 and about 6.1. So that's the, that's the total impact fee eligible cost. We cut it in half, we take the 10-year growth and service units, divide those two numbers and that gets us to about $3,721 of infrastructure cost per, per single family house anticipated in the next 10 years. And then for wastewater, it's about $1,675. So if you put those two numbers together, for, for the one-inch meter, it's about $5,400 in total. And then, this is always kind of the money chart, quite literally. Your existing impact fee that we talked about at the beginning of the presentation is a little over $4,200. What we're seeing as a result of this study, mostly simply because the cost of infrastructure has gone up over the last five years, we're seeing about a 25 roughly percent increase in what we are, the study is calculating as the max allowable. Now, US Council on January 8th, at the public hearing, will get to set whether you want it to be all the way at 53.96 or something below that. You can go any number up to that, anywhere from zero to 53.96. What's important about the other numbers on this is the year that, that studies were adopted. Most of your kind of comparisons, sister cities in southeast Texas have actually, were just a year or two in front of you, so most of these numbers were updated in 2021, 22, and 23. And even with the rising costs, you can see that Friendswood still sits below a lot of your sister cities with those rising costs taken into account. In terms of next steps, and then, yeah, this is the last slide. Today's discussion, as we said, is just really for you to be able to see the information, become familiar with it before the report goes out for advertising on Wednesday of this week. And then we have on here SEAC submits written comments to council, they've already done that, they're ahead of the curve. So really after today, we advertise and then there's a public hearing on January 8th where you get to make the, the actual decision. All right, Mayor, that's about as fast as I can go through that.
Good job, Kendall. Mayor Pro Tem, Rocky.
Can I ask about three or four questions?
Just two.
Did your, uh, did your population and, and growth needs take into account the Whitcomb property that we're going to discuss later today?
The answer is, is yes.
It is.
It did.
Yes, sir.
And where would I see that in those numbers?
If you go back and look at the map on the previous slide, keep going, sorry, where you show the land use map. The little yellow area at the confluence of, to your right, to your right, to your right. Up there on 528, right there. Now, keep in mind, the eligible costs for water and wastewater impact fees are only those that are associated with growth. It's not the infrastructure, the water lines you see immediately in front of the, the projects.
And, and your numbers take into account projected inflation?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And my last question is, my, my experience with water and wastewater systems is your costs are sort of, they stair-step. You know, so you're fine, you're fine, you're fine. And then literally the, the next house puts you to some big jump. Is that taken into account here?
Yeah, yeah. So for the next 10 years, we've looked at all the houses that are anticipated. And so any, any jump would be taken into these numbers.
So if, if, if we got to a certain number of houses and we had to put in a big new line or something along that line, which is being caused by those homes only, if, if we didn't have them, we wouldn't have to do it. Do the costs that you're putting in bear, are they fair, is what I'm saying to the existing homeowners? Because of this new growth caused us to, you know, jump up quite a bit.
Yeah. They're certainly more fair with an impact fee than they would be without one. In terms of, without an impact fee, the existing homeowners would be paying for everything. With the new, with an impact fee, any of those projects that you saw that would serve growth, at least a portion of that is being char, is being paid for by the new homeowners. Now, if they're only using a small piece of that line, they're only going to have a piece of that line in the impact fee. So it's fair both ways.
And League City next door, how, how can they be three times us?
So it, it's a function of their projects. So for instance, our projects to develop Friendswood and serve Friendswood is limited to the infrastructure we need for our regional plant, which we have one that we share with other entities. League City's building their own wastewater treatment plant by themselves. Pearlands and Alvins and Manvilles, they're not on subsidence regulations, so they're allowed to have groundwater wells, whereas we're supposed to be a part of a surface water. So all of our infrastructure costs are different. And it's based on the function of their land area, their development patterns and what they need to develop. So it's not an apples-to-apples comparison. It is nice to see that we're not on the high end of things, but at the end of the day, we're at comparing apples to oranges when we compare their numbers.
Councilmember Matrang.
Yeah, just kind of as a follow-up to Councilmember Rocky. So if we found something happened, some one of those assumptions, many assumptions that had to be made in calculating those costs. If we found something changed in year two, is it, since we do it every five, required to do it every five years, can we do it sooner than that if there's changes?
Absolutely. Yep. Yep. You can do it every few months if you want to.
I hope not.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
All right. Well, thank you, Kendall. Appreciate it.
Always a pleasure.
See you again on January 8th.
Sounds good. Thank you all.
It is now 6:16 PM. And I call to order this public hearing regarding the creation of a tax reinvestment zone and its benefits to the city and to the property in the proposed zone, which includes approximately 124.61 acres situated in the Sarah McKissick League. Abstract number 549, Friendswood, Harris County, Texas, which property is generally located south of FM 528, east of Bay Area Boulevard, north of Oak Drive, and west of Clear Creek. It includes the portions of the rights-of-way of Towns Road, Blackhawk Boulevard, and West Bay Area Boulevard. This public hearing is being held for the purpose of giving all interested persons the right to express their views for or against. One, the inclusion of approximately 124.61 acres within the zone. Two, the creation of the zone. Three, the boundaries of the zone. And/or four, the concept of tax increment financing and the benefits to the city and to the property in the proposed zone. Additionally, at this hearing, owners of property in the proposed zone will be given a reasonable opportunity to protest the inclusion of property in the zone. Everyone desiring to be a part of this hearing should have completed the public hearing comment card in the foyer and submitted it to the city secretary. Each participant shall give his/her name and address in order to provide a proper record of this hearing. The rules allow each person five minutes to present information. However, I encourage everyone to be as brief and to the point as possible. I'd now like to request that staff summarize the subject of this public hearing.
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor. As you know, we've been discussing a tax increment reinvestment zone and a public improvement district for the Whitcomb property for a little over a year and a half now. What these, what this reinvestment zone and ultimately the public improvement district represent are an economic tool cities have in their toolbox to help incentivize growth in areas that otherwise wouldn't develop in a manner that we see fit or in a manner that we would like. The reinvestment zone includes properties that are owned by Mr. Louis Tanos and his business partners. And as well as properties within the city's right-of-way, text dots right-of-way, and CCISD property that will be used as a portion of the project improvements. By having these zones in place, this property can develop in a fashion that will not rely on tax dollars from anywhere else in the city. It will not take tax dollars away from, from anywhere else in the city. And it will return additional tax dollars to the city of Friendswood for the maintenance and operations of things within the district, within the zone, and for our use elsewhere within the community.
All right. Louis Tanos, do you want to address the crowd if anything?
I'm here for any questions if you have.
All right. Have no one that wants to address us? Anyone have a question for Louis Tanos?
I, I do.
Joe, go ahead.
Would you like?
Can we go ahead and close the public hearing and then that can be the next time?
Okay. There being no one desiring to speak on this item, I'll now close this public hearing regarding creation of a tax reinvestment zone. Okay.
There's an agenda item under 8D that we can discuss, the creation of the tax increment reinvestment zone. At that point, it would be appropriate to ask the questions of Mr. Tanos.
All right. It's now 6:19 PM and I call to order this public hearing concerning the advisability of the creation of a public improvement district. Make certain improvements in the area described as approximately 124.61 acres situated in the Sarah McKissick League, abstract number 549, Friendswood, Harris County, Texas. Which property is generally located south of FM 528, east of Bay Area Boulevard, north of Oak Drive, and west of Clear Creek. It includes the portions of the rights-of-way of Towns Road, Blackhawk Boulevard, and West Bay Area Boulevard. This public hearing is being held for the purpose of giving all interested persons the right to speak for or against the creation of a public improvement district and the improvements to be made therein. Public hearing rules remain the same as previously noted.
The same that I mentioned earlier for the reinvestment zone, the public improvement district is the other component of this economic incentive for this project to be viable.
Okay, there being no one desiring to speak on this item, I'll now close this public hearing regarding the creation of a public improvement district and the improvements to be made therein. Item 8C, consider authorizing the professional services payment agreement with Madison Development Corp., LLC. Regarding the assumption of the costs associated with the creation of the Friendswood City Center Public Improvement District and the establishment of the reinvestment zone, number one, Friendswood, Texas.
Motion to approve.
Mr., excuse me, one second. I'm sorry. This item's not ready to be acted upon this evening. There's, it's still being worked out and I apologize for that. But just as a brief summary to council, this is, this particular item's intended to cover the city's consultants' costs for the development and operation of this district. The developer will be paying these costs in conjunction with the development itself.
Thanks, Marad. So we'll, will we see this?
You will see this.
In a week?
In a week. Yes.
Okay. Considerance 8D, consider an ordinance designating a contiguous geographic area being approximately 124.61 acres located in the Sarah McKissick League, abstract number 549, Friendswood, Harris County, Texas. As a reinvestment zone pursuant to Chapter 311 of the Texas Tax Code to be known as reinvestment zone number one, city of Friendswood. Describing the boundaries of the zone, creating a board of directors for the zone, establishing a tax increment fund for the zone, and providing for the effective date and termination date of the zone.
So, Mr. Mayor, this was the item that I was discussing earlier that would be the appropriate time to ask Mr. Tanos a question, provided there's a motion on the table in a second.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Let me note also that we all have redlined exhibit for this ordinance here at our, at the dais. There's a few numbers that changed.
So in, in short, in summary, the changes that are included in your packet, the state law requires that we develop what's known as a preliminary finance plan for the tax increment reinvestment zone. All of these numbers are moving targets until such time that the project is physically bid and issued, bonds are ultimately issued. So there were some changes to Exhibit B. The total in public infrastructure cost as estimated today is about $69 million. The reality of that number could be a lot less. It could be a lot higher. It just depends on what's the market looks like when the, the engineering plans are completed and they go out to bid to the public. The other thing I was going to highlight, obviously, the purpose of, of this exercise is to ensure the feasibility of the project. So the development, once completed, is going to put a certain amount of value on the ground. And what is agreed to as part of the, the creation of the tax increment reinvestment zone is that 70% of the additional revenue that's created above the base value revenue will be set aside to pay for the public infrastructure associated with this project. In reality, what's being done is you're setting a ceiling at 70%. If the value of the project comes in higher than the $710 million than, that's proposed, then in all reality, 50% may be sufficient to pay the debt service associated with the public infrastructure. If the number, for instance, comes in lower at 500 million, let's say, the developer, the development's still capped at 70%. So what that does is that reduces the debt of the overall district or requires the developer to bring additional cash to, to the market in order to achieve the desires of this project. So it's in essence, setting a protection clause in there for the city. The remaining 30%, then it goes to the city of Friendswood directly to cover our operations and maintenance costs associated with the development. The maintenance of the park, the 50-acre park that we're getting out there, as well as the provision of public services like police officers, fire, et cetera. And then whatever we collect in excess of what's needed to pay the debt service just goes into our general fund to be used elsewhere in the community.
All right. Appreciate it. Do I have a motion on this item approving the proposed ordinance with the changes noted in the redlined exhibit that we each have?
I think I made a motion to approve.
Somebody's seconded it down there.
Okay, I got a motion from Councilmember Hanks and a second from Councilmember Aaron Wirt. Question, discussion? Did you have a question?
I, I, yeah, I had several questions, not very many.
Okay, go ahead.
Let's start on Mr. Tanos, if you could. This is a great project and on a piece of property that's, that's been sitting there empty for, for quite a long time. So I applaud your efforts to, to do something I think looks phenomenal for this project, for this city. But my question is this, you know, this is, we, although, I'm going to just give me, bear with, I'll get to my question in a second. You know, this isn't a new concept using these reinvestment zones and these development, these PIDs. That's not new. It's been around for a while. I mean, last I looked, it was close to 400 of these in the state of Texas. It was enacted by the Texas Legislature just for these kind of projects that, that need more infrastructure. So it's new to us, but it's not new to, to our neighbors around us. But if for some reason we did not approve, the city didn't approve the TERS and the PID, what would be the impact on your project?
Well, the project would be dead. I mean, in essence, the, the entire project that we have designed would, would basically be dead. I mean, it wouldn't pencil at all. Those lots to break even at minimum would be $35 a foot, which if you're familiar with commercial real estate in Friendswood, that's $15 above market. So we've done the math 19 different ways. So if you eliminate all the infrastructure and we carry that cost, the break-even points, $35, $36. The park goes away, terracing, ponds, boardwalks, fishing piers, road to Bay Area, Blackhawk, Bay Area Boulevard, fire stations. There's a lot of city infrastructure that's being developed that has nothing to do with my real estate holdings. Those are individual properties within the development. Most of this project is city, does infrastructure development and amenities for the city.
So you'd do something, but not anything like what you're currently proposing?
Most likely, we would have to chop up just the front parts on the 528 side and sell them to the, you know, you might get a Jack in the Box and a gas station and a Kentucky Fried Chicken. I mitigate my losses and that's pretty much the end of it, which nobody wants, I don't think.
No, no, I, I agree.
Yeah.
Okay. This might be you or Marad, might, might be you. So if you just hang with me one more, just a little bit longer. So I've been trying, there's a lot of numbers in the agreements that have been published, the draft agreements. These are all preliminary, these are all draft and, and looking at those. I'm trying to make sense of tying some of the numbers together. I think I've kind of figured out what the answer is, but I wanted to see if, if one of, either one of you had a, had a better view on this. So I mean, we're talking right now, again, as an estimate at this point, total non-project costs are at $710.7 million. Just, that's just as a data point. But the TERS fund contributions, 30-year total, came in at $87.9 million. So 87.9 million. I mean, that's just out, out of the, that's out of the draft agreements that, that have been submitted.
Yes, sir.
And, okay. And, but then in the, you just mentioned that the reinvestment zone number one, total project costs are ex, are expected to be, estimated to be 69 million, approximately 69 million at this point.
Correct.
What, can you explain, and Marad, you're looking at me very intently, so maybe it's, it's you, but can you explain the difference in those two numbers?
Sure. And the, the agreement you're referencing is the preliminary financing plan. It's not an agreement. But basically, it's, the intent of the plan is to make sure that this project is even viable to begin with. So Louis and his team of engineers have gone out and did all the work associated with the development of this track and has determined that it's going to cost about $69, $69 million to put in the public infrastructure. That's the roadway for Blackhawk, Towns Road, that's the detention pond, that's the park improvements, that's the, the fire station, et cetera. It's going to cost about $69 million. Well, in order to support the debt service for that $69 million cost, they need to make sure that the development's going to generate enough revenue in order to support those long-term costs. So the, the 69 is an estimated cost for probable cause for construction of public infrastructure. The 87, $87 million that you referenced is to show you that the district at the 70% cap, the tax increment reinvestment zone will generate $87 million, larger than the 69 million, so that the project is feasible. The reality is, once the, the public improvements are bid, that's what's being paid for by the PID and the 70% of the TERS. If values come in higher than the 710, then maybe only 30%, 50%, whatever that number needs to be to pay the debt service for the public improvements is all that's going to be charged.
And again, we're working off a cost generated by the engineers as a probable cost. In 25 years of doing this, I have never been as expensive as the engineer. Knock on wood. But that's just, I don't see that as.
It was kind of two different calculations and you were just proving that the project was feasible.
We're giving you a worst-case scenario, yes. Now, I'm going to start hard bidding this project. I, I think I have my full design and development stamped and sealed drawings probably mid-next week. And then we go to work doing the actual hard bid and that's basically here at our cost.
Okay. Well, that, that was all the questions I had for you. I have one, just one more. Thank you very much, Mr. Tanos. I had just one more statement, just to kind of, in looking at this, what made sense to me. And, and if, Marad, if I'm saying something incorrectly, please correct. But the way I'm looking at this, I found on the Texas Comptroller's website a nine-step process to create and implement a TERS. And that helped me kind of go through that, understanding where we are. And what I, what we're doing tonight is we're being asked to approve step four. Well, there's quite a few more steps left in, in this process where we're going to get input. So it helps me just understanding where we are in this evaluation. That, that's all I had. Mayor, thank you.
Councilmember Hanks and then Mayor Pro Tem, Rock.
Well, I, I know this is new for us, but I appreciate you bringing me very well in to, a few months ago, to kind of educate us on this. And I appreciate all the time you spent last week with me and others on council. I'm sure you did individually and again today. And so I really appreciate you helping us get prepared for this.
Yes, ma'am. As Councilmember. As Councilmember Mitrangin mentioned, there are still multiple steps ahead and opportunities for us to look at this particular project. All staff is recommending be completed tonight is the creation of the reinvestment zone. It doesn't obligate us to move forward with the project. We're still working on the public improvement district and the development agreement associated with this project. But again, these are economic and tools, economic incentive tools that cities have in order to achieve projects that you wouldn't otherwise get.
Mayor Pro Tem Rocky.
Yeah, actually, tacking on that point, um, for a couple of years, I was on the Texas Municipal League Board, and in that role, I got to organize the training of new city council members and all that, and I would have to introduce speakers and we'd have sessions. And every single one, we had a session about bids and TERS and all that. And they're fabulously successful in Texas. I mean, the, the numbers that have, uh, that have failed or had problems is infinitesimal. They are, they have been used very well as Councilmember Mitrangin said, there's 400 of them or so going. And, um, and they're, they're just very successful. And, uh, the other thing is that in my, coming up on 12 years on this council, I know how many times we've talked about the Whiteman property, we went through all the effort with the church. Several years before I was on council, I was aware of a number of different ideas for this property. I hate to, I hate to say, I'm glad we waited because now we're getting a really good one, but I'm glad we waited, and it's going to be a really good one. Uh, and I think that it's going to make a tremendous difference, uh, in this, in the financial stability of this town. It's going to be an attraction in, in, in the area town that it's going to be in. Uh, and I think we have a developer who lives here. We know where his house is. He better do a good job, and, uh, I think, uh, I think it's just going to be, um, an outstanding project.
Councilmember Branson.
I would just like to echo what Councilmember Rocky was saying. I actually was, the very first thing I saw when I saw P&amp;Z was a project with the Whiteman property. And I would just like to say that, Mr. Tanos, I really do appreciate what you brought to us because it is considerably better than one of the first projects I saw on that property. So, um, I'm very excited about this as well. I'm pleased that it's coming to Friendswood.
Me too. Okay. Unless there's any more discussion, I have a motion and a second. All in favor? Opposed, none opposed. Motion passes six to nothing. Moving on, item nine, zone classification change from neighborhood commercial to downtown district. Got to check my watch again. It's now 6:35, and I call to order this public hearing regarding a proposed zone classification change concerning property located at 901 South Friendswood Drive and more particularly described as .54 acres being Lot 1 of Southern Breeze, a subdivision in Galveston County, Texas, according to the map of Or Platt thereof, recorded in volume 18, page 353 of the map records of Galveston County, Texas, to change from neighborhood commercial NC to downtown district DD. This public hearing is being held for the purpose of giving all interested persons the right to express their views regarding a zone classification change concerning property located at 901 South Friendswood Drive from NC to downtown district. Public hearing rules remain the same as previously noted. Aubrey Harbin.
Good evening. Uh, so just a brief little, um, description of the property. This is the property across the street at East Castlewood and 518. Uh, it is within the downtown district boundary. It's the blue line on the map. Um, it backs up to this property. Um, and ultimately, it's the goal to get all the properties within that boundary zone to downtown district. Um, some of the benefits that they get is their development fees get waived, um, and, they will have to comply with the requirements of the downtown district, although sidewalks and lighting have been taken care of at this point, um, or almost, so close. Um, required notices were sent and published, and P&amp;Z is forwarding a positive recommendation. Uh, they held their public hearing on November 16th, and it was a five to zero, but we had two commissioners absent.
Thank you. Is the applicant here? Okay. Okay, there being no one desiring to speak on this item, I now close this public hearing. Moving on to item, item 9B, consider an ordinance regarding a zone classification change concerning property located 901 South Friendswood Drive to change from neighborhood commercial to downtown district.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second. Get that? Councilmember Mitrangin, Councilmember Branson?
Yes, sir.
Any more discussion on this? Mayor Pro Tem Rocky.
That's the, that old house there, right?
Klein's house.
Klein's house. That, that house has some historical significance, so is the house going to stay?
So, the intent, as the applicant has made known to us, is the house would stay and it'd be renovated to comply with current building and fire codes. Don't know if the project ultimately, what those costs are until they move forward. They wanted to make sure they had zoning in place first before they expended too much effort.
Anyone else? All in favor? Six to nothing. Item 10, reauthorization of building permit fees. It's now 6:38. And I call to order this public hearing regarding the reauthorization of building permit fees, which fees include those charged by the City of Friendswood as a condition to constructing, renovating, or remodeling a structure and contain in appendix D fees of the Friendswood City Code. This public hearing is being held for the purpose of giving all interested persons the right to express their views regarding reauthorization of such building permit fees. Public hearing rules remain the same as previously noted. Aubrey Harbin.
Um, so this is just in reference to the House bill that was, uh, passed to, um, that goes into effect January 1st. We have to have a public hearing, um, so we're not changing any fees, this is just authorizing what's already on our, in our ordinance, um, just meeting the requirements of the state. Um, and then it's required to be reauthorized every 10 years.
Great. There being no one desiring to speak on this item, I now close this public hearing. Item 10B, consider an ordinance reauthorizing the building permit fees contained in appendix D of the Friendswood City Code pursuant to section 214 dot 908 of the Texas Local Government Code. Do I have a motion?
Motion to.
I'll second.
Councilmember Aaron Wirt, Councilmember Hanks. Need any more discussion on this one? All in favor? Passes six to nothing. Item 11, city manager's report. Let somebody else talk.
Mayor and council, we have a number of items to present this evening. A lot of these you may, uh, realize that are repeats from this time last year, but that just speaks to the, the great employees we have here at the City of Friendswood. The first one, the Greater Harris County 911, recently published their metrics for this past year. Uh, they require that members dispatch, uh, facilities within their jurisdiction have a, 90% of their calls need to be answered within 15 seconds or less. Uh, Friendswood was one of the top, uh, performers here in that 99.75% of our calls met that metric, um, which is impressive, uh, but thanks in large part, uh, to our dispatch services and the police department. So, thank you, Josh, to you and your team. The next item I'd like to report on is the, um, the Historical Society's Christmas Tree lighting tomorrow night, which, uh, Mayor Pro Tem Rocky has already stolen the thunder, so we don't have to stay on this very long. But if you haven't been, I encourage folks to, to attend, it's a, it's a fun event. Speaking of fun events, in December, our library is hosting the Wonderland Quartet. They will be performing on Monday, December 18th at 6:30 PM. It is sponsored, the program's sponsored by the Friends of the Library. It is a fun evening of, um, winter Wonderland-type music. Uh, so I would encourage folks to attend. Like to recognize this evening, our own Deputy Director, Rhonda Blasquez, in Administrative Services, who will be serving as the President of Region 14 of the Gulf Coast Finance Officers Association of Texas. Between Rhonda and Katina, they both have held similar roles, leadership roles, in this professional organization over the past several years. It speaks volumes to the quality of employees we have, uh, in Friendswood, that they're in leadership roles in their professional organizations as well. So, thank you, Rhonda.
So, you knew this was coming, obviously. You moved your way up. From Treasurer, Secretary, Vice President.
In that same vein, I'd like to recognize our City Secretary, Letty Brish. She recently got back from Austin, serving at the Secretary of State's Seminar to go over the legislative updates. She, in conjunction with the City Secretary of Laporte, gave a presentation on council packets and practical considerations for elections. Uh, I don't think you can tell, or at least the picture in the corner doesn't give it justice, but there's probably a couple hundred people in the room listening to her speak, and not a single eye is closed, they're not asleep, they're not, no. Uh, but Letty is an authority, uh, in election law, and we appreciate that she's putting on these, uh, these seminars at the Secretary of State Conference, so thank you, Letty.
She had the second grader's attention tonight, too.
Yes.
That was good.
Uh, but last, last but definitely not least, our Friendswood EMS was recently recognized at the state conference, uh, and they were awarded the Texas Department of State Health Services, um, award for public education and injury prevention. Uh, you'll see on the screen a litany of items that they are recognized for, that our Friendswood EMS, uh, does for the community free of charge, uh, in, in terms, in hopes to educate people to be better equipped for emergencies and just day-to-day life. So, thank you, Chief Camp, for all that you do and your team. And that is all that I had, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. It's good to see you, Chief. One month into the job and everything going well.
He's no comment.
No comment?
He made a jinxer.
Where's the, where's the Safety Director, uh, he escaped? All right. Oh, there he is, okay. Brian Mansfield poking his head around. Were your ears burning?
Yeah.
You're doing a great job. All right, item 12, business items, 12A, consider authorizing the Third Amendment with Garver LLC for the Clear Creek Crossing Project and the new, uh, GST grounds...
Storage.
Storage tank and pump improvements at...
Service water plant.
Storage water plant, number one. Thank you for the acronyms. Let me get a motion here.
Motion to.
Second.
Counsel, they got a motion and a second. Go ahead, Hill.
Okay, uh, this is a little bit of a housekeeping measure. Um, we have, uh, a 24-inch waterline project that's been, uh, uh, under design for, uh, and we're targeting, uh, uh, next year to get that out for bid. In the process of, uh, doing our due diligence, we, uh, realized that, uh, there's going to be some overlap, uh, between this project and the next, uh, project that we'll be discussing, the, uh, uh, Blackhawk Boulevard reconstruction. And, uh, uh, we've realized that, uh, in order to minimize, uh, the, uh, uh, effect on, in the disruption to, uh, citizens that live along, uh, Blackhawk Boulevard, uh, we can, uh, roll part, a portion of that 24-inch waterline project into, uh, the Blackhawk Boulevard, uh, project. So, uh, this is an amendment to, uh, the contract that we have with Garver. Uh, we'll, uh, uh, deduct a portion of, uh, the, their fees from, uh, this portion and then we'll, uh, this project, and then we'll, uh, roll it into the, uh, next project that we'll, we'll discuss right now.
Excellent. Any questions? All in favor? Six to nothing. 12B, consider authorizing a professional services agreement with HDR Engineering, Inc., for the Blackhawk Boulevard Reconstruction Phase II Repackage C Project. Do I have a motion on this item?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second. Go ahead, Hill.
So, this is a partnership project that we have with Adrian Garcia's Commissioner, Precinct Two of Harris County. Um, this is going to, uh, uh, complete, uh, at least that's what we're projecting right now. Uh, no telling what'll happen if we have another pandemic or something in next year, hopefully not, but, uh, we're, uh, uh, looking to complete the rest of, uh, Blackhawk Boulevard. This is a, um, professional services agreement with HDR. Um, they will be, uh, taking the lead, uh, on the, uh, design of that, and, uh, we'll, we'll be shooting for, uh, letting that contract, uh, sometime in summer or fall of next year.
Any questions? All in favor? Thank you, Hill. Item 12C, consider authorizing an interlocal agreement with Galveston County Consolidated Drainage District for the Deepwood Drainage Improvement Project.
Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Rusty, thanks for being here tonight, representing the Drainage District. Good party, by the way, last Friday. Uh, all right. Hill, you got something to add on?
Yes, uh, this is, uh, a agreement that we have, uh, before you, for property that, uh, in the, uh, Deepwood subdivision in that area. The Drainage District has purchased some, uh, property along the, uh, the creek. Uh, the city had some, uh, buyout properties, uh, that, uh, uh, they already owned, and, uh, through this, uh, interlocal agreement, will make those, uh, properties available, uh, to them for a flood control project.
Great plan.
Good comment?
Yes. Mayor Pro Tem Rocky?
Not particularly on the Deepwood, but I wanted to, uh, say that the, uh, Galveston County Consolidated Drainage District project that you guys are doing on 2351 on Marys Creek, uh, because everybody drives by, sees it. Uh, but I watched with interest, you know, the hard rain we had a couple of days ago, and that, that thing did really great. It looked, it looked like it was really, um, really doing the job, so nice work there.
Anybody else? All in favor? Motion passes. 12D, consider authorizing an interlocal agreement for the purchase of remote sensing data and related services with the Houston-Galveston Area Council. Do I have a motion?
To approve. Second.
Motion and a second. Any questions on this item? Anybody from GIS here?
So, we're purchasing LiDAR data, uh, from HGAC, they're going to send the plane over Friendswood and some other cities, and, uh, we're partnering with them for the cost of those data points.
All right. Good. Laser data. Good. Any questions? All in favor? Okay. Motion passes. Item 13, proposed resolutions and ordinances, 13A, consider on final reading an ordinance renaming Harold Whittaker Drive to Whittaker Drive.
Motion to approve. Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor? Motion passes. 13B, consider an ordinance amending the city's general budget for fiscal year 2023, 2024 by approving Budget Amendment 1 and providing for supplemental appropriation and/or transfer of certain funds.
Motion to approve. Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor? 13C, consider on first reading an ordinance adopting an annually repeating 100% updated service credit with transfers and 50% non-retroactive cost of living adjustment increase to annuitants.
Motion to approve. Second.
Motion and a second. Any questions on this one?
Just a brief summary, uh, this does not apply to existing employees, this applies to retirees. Uh, they currently receive a COLA, or 50% of a COLA that's calculated based upon the date they retired, um, compared to what day is it today? The state law allows us to recalculate that figure instead of looking at it from the historical perspective, from the day they retired to the past 12 months. By doing so, we're able to save $100,000 in this year's fiscal budget, uh, for FY '24, as well as reduce our actuarial, actuarial liability by nearly a million dollars.
Quick question. Mo, how many retirees do we have?
Close to 230 or 40, if I remember correctly, but the number exceeds the number of current employees that we have today. Um, there, there is not a negative impact. I believe the, the worst impact was a reduction of $6 in the growth in their annuity. No annuities go down, but it wouldn't grow as much as $6 for, uh, an individual.
All in favor? Motion passes. Okay, item 13D. Thank you, sir. Consider a resolution casting the City of Friendswood's ballot for the election of a person to serve on the Board of Directors of the Harris Central Appraisal District. Do I have a motion casting the city's vote for the only, uh, person on the ballot, Mike Sullivan?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor? Motion passes. 13E. Consider a resolution casting the City of Friendswood's ballot for the election of representatives to the Galveston Central Appraisal District Board of Directors for 2024, 2025. Councilmember Hanks.
I move that we appoint all of our votes to Scott Grass. And I had a request from the school district to...
I'll second that, by the way.
I'm sorry.
Let me go ahead.
Well, I was just going to, I had a request from the superintendent to consider that.
And that's a...
We have so few votes, and so it takes quite a few to get someone appointed.
Turn your mic, somebody's turned their mic off. She's waving her...
We don't have enough votes to appoint a person ourselves, and so often it takes...
More municipalities or school districts and any different taxing entities to get enough votes to seat someone. And the first I heard that Cheryl would need to be voted on was tonight, because my understanding up until just a few minutes ago, is that she would automatically have a seat, that's what I've been told, on the board.
She currently does.
She currently does and was appointed, and I was told she would be again, but I may be misinformation, but that's what I've been told.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor? Thank you. Item 13F, consider a resolution designating the city manager as the sub-recipient authorized representative and granting the city manager signatory authority for the Federal Emergency Management Agency's Flood and Mitigation Assistant Grant Program.
Motion to approve. Second.
Motion and a second. Any questions? All in favor? Passes. All right, consent agenda, item 14. I need a motion to approve the consent agenda of items 14A through 14C.
I'm going... Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor? Okay, it's now 6:53. We will now recess into and conduct an executive session pursuant to sections 551.071 and 551.087 of the Texas Government Code to discuss and/or deliberate the offer of a financial or other incentive to a business prospect for the development of the Friendswood City Center and to consult with the city's attorneys regarding a development agreement related I now reconvene the open meeting of the Friendswood City Council and announce in accordance with section 551.071 and 551.087 of the Texas Government Code, no action was taken in the executive sessions. We are going to...
Mr. Mayor, as I mentioned earlier this evening, there are two items that remain on the council agenda. I'm recommending no action be taken this evening, as those items are still being worked on, but I did want them in your backup material so that you had an opportunity to start looking at them.
Thank you, sir. That moves us on to item 17, adjournment. I make the motion that we adjourn.
Second.
All right. Good meeting.